Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tocco Ho zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the month of December 2017. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nancy, please call the roll.
Member Lang.
Here.
Member Scalzo.
Present.
Member Palladino.
Present.
Member Jackman.
Present.
Member Fiore.
Present.
Chairman Ringwald.
Present. First order of business is to approve the minutes from the November the 8th, 2017 meeting. Do we have any comments, additions, deletions to the minutes?
No.
No.
Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the November the 8th, 2017 meeting.
Second.
All in, oh. Take the roll call, please.
Member Lang.
Approved.
Member Scalzo.
I'm staying.
Member Palladino.
Approved.
Member Jackman.
Approve.
Member Fiore.
Approve.
Chairman Ringwald.
Approved. Thank you. First item we're going to cover tonight is 173 Marbledale Road to amend a special permit. Is the applicant here? Please step to the mic. State your name.
Lyle Lamah.
Thank you. Do you have any additional questions or concerns that you'd like to address with the Board?
Not at this time.
Okay. I just want to remind the public that the public hearing is closed, so we have no more opportunity to comment on this amendment to a special permit. Does any member have a motion for Broken Bow that they would like to read?
I have a motion in the form of resolution.
Please proceed.
This is a long one, so stay with me. All right. This is application by Broken Bow Brewery for an amendment to an existing special permit issued by this Board on November 14th, 2012. Broken Bow Brewery has an address of 173 Marbledale Road, Tocco, New York, Section 39, Block 4, Lot 8. Broken Bow Brewery has been operating as a brewery and tasting room since its inception in 2012. It has been an asset to the community and has been an anchor in revitalizing the Marbledale Road corridor as envisioned by the Tocco Ho master plan. The applicant is currently operating under a special permit as it was determined by the Board in 2012 that the use of the brewery is a manufacturing use, and thus is required to operate under a special permit pursuant to zoning code Section 4-8.1b3. Over the years, the applicant has held numerous events, mostly charitable, at the brewery, and has been required each time to seek permission of the Village Board to conduct these events. The applicant, after being in operation for an excess of five years, now sees the need to have an amended special permit as the business has evolved. The applicant is seeking three main amendments to the special permit. First, the applicant is seeking to extend its beer garden, a courtyard adjacent to the exterior of the building to encroach on two existing parking spaces. Second, the applicant is seeking to rotate a high-end food truck on the premises. The food truck would be located in an area in the parking lot not to affect any of the existing parking spaces. The food truck would not be owned or operated by the applicant, and the applicant envisions the truck to serve high-end gourmet food, and the applicant would rotate among food truck operators. Third, the applicant is seeking to host functions at the site. These functions would be consistent with the functions already held at the facility and have been approved on an as-needed basis from the Village Board. As in addition to conducting certain functions at the facility, the applicant seeks to utilize a tent that will cover a portion of the parking lot. Discussion: Applicant is located in the general commercial district as there are certain permitted uses as of right in said district. These permitted uses as of right are the following: One, offices for executive administration and clerical purposes; Two, scientific or research laboratories; Three, warehouse and storage facilities located enclosed within a building; Four, schools; Five, sports and health clubs; Six, hotels; Seven restaurants; Eight retail and service businesses; Nine churches. There are then uses in said district that must operate under a special permit. Those uses are: One, motor vehicle filling stations or motor vehicle repair body shops; Two, outdoor storage; In case of temporary outdoor storage for duration less than 90 days, permission may be granted by the Village Building Department; Three, manufacturing including the fabrication, assembly of products incidental in storage, sale and distribution of such products but excluding heavy industrial processing where products are extracted from raw materials. It was determined by the Board in 2012 that the applicant is a manufacturer and thus operates under a special permit in the general commercial district. It was determined that the manufacturing is the brewing of beer, of the beer. The applicant is now seeking by this application to expand the uses of the premises to uses outside of the manufacturing use. However, it is determined that the requested uses are still consistent with permitted uses in the general commercial zone. The expansion of the beer garden, the utilization of a food truck, and the hosting of functions are ancillary to the main manufacturing use but are not inherently manufacturing use. Thanks, Gary. It is deemed that the requested ancillary uses would fall into the restaurant and services business uses that would be operated in the general commercial district as of right. Since the main use of this business is brewing beer, which is a manufacturing use, we will analyze the requested ancillary uses under the performance standards of a special permit as the main use of the business is manufacturing. The performance standards for special use permits in the general commercial zoning district that this Board must consider are as follows: One, dissemination of smoke, gas, dust, odor, or any other atmospheric pollution outside the building in which the use is conducted, or with respect to a use or any part thereof is not conducted within a completely enclosed building, any such dissemination whatsoever; Two, noise in violation of Article 2 of Chapter 15 of the Code of the Village of Tocco entitled "Noise and Other Enumerated nuisances"; Three, discharge of any waste material whatsoever in any water course; Four, dissemination of glare or vibration beyond the immediate site of the use; Five, traffic on any street primarily serving residential districts that is incongruous to the traffic normal to such streets; Physical hazard by means of fire, explosion, radiation, or similar cause to property in the same or adjacent district; One, expansion of the beer garden. In applying the above performance standards, the expansion of the beer garden is determined that the expansion meets all the above criteria: A, there will be no dissemination of smoke, gas, dust, odor from this use; B, noise must be in compliance with all noise provisions of the Village Code; C, there will be no discharge of any waste in any water course; D, there will be no dissemination of glare or vibration; There will be no impact on any traffic by the beer garden expansion. Therefore, the request for the expansion of the beer garden is approved. The use of a, two, the use of a food truck on the premises. In applying the above performance standards to the use of a food truck on the premises, it is determined that the expansion meets all the above criteria: F, there will be no dissemination of smoke, gas, dust, or odor from this use; G, noises must be in compliance with all noise provisions of the Village Code; There will be no discharge of any waste in any water course; There will be no dissemination of glare or vibration; There will be no impact on any traffic by a food truck being located on the premises. We believe the food truck will service the patrons of the tasting room and do not feel that there will be any impact of traffic by the food truck operating on the premises. Therefore, the request of a use of a food truck is approved with the following conditions: The food truck: One, the food truck may only be on the premises during the hours that the tasting room is open; Two, the food truck may only be located in the area next to the beer garden and shall not interfere or impact any of the parking space located on the premises; Three, all cooking must be done within the food truck; There shall be no outside cooking of food; Number three, the use of premises for the events. Almost since its inception, the applicant has been holding events at the facility. Prior to this application, the applicant would seek permission from the Village Board to hold said events. With this application, the applicant is seeking approval from this Board to hold events so as to not have to apply to the Village Board for future events. This Board views the events in three separate categories: First, events that take place completely within the confines of the building; Second, events that take place in the parking area of the property; And lastly, events that take place on the parking area and are covered by a tent. A, events that take place in the confines of the building are approved as it meets the performance standard of the code. The events shall not be limited in frequency but shall comply with all Fire Code regulations and only be held during the business hours of the tasting room. B, events that take place in the parking area but not require a tent are approved with the following conditions: One, there shall be a limit of 12 days in the calendar year where the parking lot may be closed for events; Two, applicant must continue its agreement with its neighbor which a copy shall be attached to hereto as Exhibit A, for the neighbor to provide overfull parking for the event. If at any time the agreement between the parties ends then before applicant, ends then before applicant hosts any further events, applicant must provide to this Board an alternative parking solution that is acceptable to this Board. Three, the events must take place during the normal business hours of the tasting room. Four, before hosting an event, applicant must obtain any and all necessary permits or approvals from the Fire and Police Department; Five, any catered food at the events must comply with all Westchester County Department of Health approvals. It is recommended that applicant use its best efforts to use local business to cater said events. All events must, six, all events must comply with all noise restrictions of the Village Code. C, events that take place in the parking area and utilize a tent are approved with the following conditions: One, all conditions listed in Subsection B above are hereby reiterated herein and shall be conditions of Subsection C. In addition to the above, the following conditions are in addition to those listed above. Two, there shall be a limit of four tented events in the calendar year. These events shall be included in the 12 events as listed above. Three, the tent shall meet all Fire Code regulations. Four, the tent cannot exceed the dimensions of 40 feet by 40 feet. Five, the tent must not stay up for a period in excess of 48 hours. Six, the use of pop-up tents shall not be counted toward the applicant's four tented events limitation. Further, the special permit decision granting the applicant, the initial special permit expires 10 years from the date of the original decision by this Board. This Board hereby extends the original special permit approval for the brewing of beer and tasting room operations until either the applicant ceases doing business or the business is sold, whichever is earlier. The approvals for the ancillary uses as applied for in the instant application shall expire concurrently with the original uses originally approved by this Board, provided there are no more than five nuisance complaints, i.e. excessive noise to the Police Department or Building Department, in any calendar year. If there are, if there are in excess of five nuisance complaints in any calendar year, then applicant must reapply to this Board to extend the approvals for these ancillary uses. Lastly, based on this application as submitted, this zoning Board of Appeals finds and determines that: One, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of secret and its implementing regulations; Two, this zoning Board of Appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make a determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application; Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Thank you, Member Jackman. Do we have a second to this motion?
Second.
Thank you. Nancy, please call the Board.
Member Lang.
Approved.
Member Scalzo.
Approve.
Member Palladino.
Approved.
Member Jackman.
Approve.
Chairman Ringwald.
Approved. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Lyle.
Thank you.
Good luck.
I appreciate that. May I just add that I very much are genuinely on behalf of my family, appreciate all the discourse and energy invested by the Board in this decision, and also by the Village Attorney in guiding us through it. So, thank you, and we look forward to being a growing and contributing member to the community.
Thank you very much. The next item is 190 Lake Avenue. Oh, I'm sorry, they have adjourned for the evening. There is no 190 Lake tonight. Next item will be 100 Marbledale Road, special permit extension. Is the applicant here? Please step forward.
Edward Quinteri, 100 Marbledale Road.
Do you have any questions or concerns you'd like to address with the Board?
Not at this time.
Any Board members have any further questions or concerns they'd like to address with the applicant?
I would like to note for the file that we've received pictures of a voluntary duct redirection that the applicant has provided directing any and all fumes from his property towards the front of the structure, which is greatly appreciated given its voluntary nature.
That's it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is still open on 100 Marbledale. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment regarding 100 Marbledale Road special permit extension? Please step forward.
No.
Tom, do you have that picture he gave us of the duct?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board.
Evening.
My name is Phil Denning. I own the property at 125 Marbledale Road across the street, and in 2012, my tenants, the present ones that are looking for a renewal of a permit, a special use permit, moved across the street, and the last paycheck that I got from them was in 2012, and that was in July. And they still owe me a considerable amount of money, and I am requesting that this special use permit be withdrawn. I am further requesting that when the special use permit was given to my building, it was on the condition that there was, and it's still in the minutes, that there would be no auto body shop allowed within 200 feet, if the existing auto body shop. They are approximately 40 feet away. Also, Richie had said that we want to be good neighbors, we want to be gentlemen, and we'll work something out. And the last I heard from him was he was going to pay me nothing. So, I am requesting that this application be denied.
I'm going to have to refer to the Attorney. I don't think we can take into consideration a personal issue with you being owed money from the applicant.
Yeah, in my opinion, Mr. Chair, I think that would be a civil matter between the parties here. It would be a, I guess, I don't know if there was a lease or anything, but that's, again, it's a civil matter. You guys have to take the special permit standards and apply them to this application. That's what your job is.
And as far as the gentleman's question regarding the special permit contingencies prior to this granting, the original granting, you know, this 200-foot sort of buffer.
Right.
Do we have any background on that?
I don't. I'll have to defer to Mr. Williams. I know Mr. Williams isn't here tonight because he's ill, but I just, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm just a little confused on what point you're making, Mr. Denning. The 200, there is no body shop across the street anymore, correct?
There isn't, because the Village wouldn't allow me to go in there. I had seven applications, seven people, to go in there, and I was denied, and the Village Attorney can tell you that.
Is it because he brought the special permit with him across the street, essentially?
That's my understanding. I wasn't the Village Attorney at the time, so I don't know all the facts of exactly what happened. I haven't seen any applications coming from Mr. Denning's building. I think that was the prior council. But what happens is, once that body shop moved across the street to its present location, then Mr. Denning's building becomes ineligible for having another body shop in it because it's within, I believe, that 200 feet regulation or code.
Does this legally enter into any way in our discussion or ruling on this case in front of us?
No.
This is settled and part of, you know?
Right.
I mean, Member Jackman, there was a zoning code change on, for Marbledale Road is what would be allowed, and that created that 200-foot buffer that didn't used to exist.
Oh, this was after he already had his special permit.
And so, that was a couple of years ago. And then what happened is when the tenant left, then that zoning code came into place, and you couldn't put an auto body shop into Mr. Denning's place.
That's not the case. That's not the case, because I had seven tenants that was willing to come in there, okay? And they were denied the right to come in.
Because of the zoning code.
Yeah, well, why was their permit allowed to go across the street when it wasn't 200 feet away?
Because the code, we think the code didn't exist at that time, but we don't know. We need to check with the building inspector.
The code exists. The code hasn't changed.
Excuse me, Gary, doesn't he take the special use permit with him as?
And that's what happened. He took it across the street to the present location.
And he took the permit with him at that time?
That's my understanding.
Correct.
The permit followed the business owner, not the, not the building.
Right.
Yeah. I'm not a lawyer, but that, from what I remember at the time and everything, and when you had come, the permit with the tenant.
Excuse me. I went to four meetings and was denied, okay? And the one, the last thing was, and the chairman at that time has still left town, but I know where he is. And he said, "Oh, Mr. Denning, if you take your glass, if you take the whole front end of the building and you spend half a million dollars, you can get an auto salespeople in there or an auto body shop or whatever," but he wanted to let it, make it look good for the bank. The bank has done nothing for me. Or the bank, not the bank, the hotel. So, I'm left with, I had, the Village Attorney can tell you, I had two tenants to come in. I had seven originally with auto body. I had two tenants to come in, and twice we had to go back to a meeting, and somebody was missing, and there wasn't a quorum, and this, and that, and the other. And I took it upon myself, because I was losing money, I still had to pay my taxes, vacant for 17 months, okay? And I took it upon myself, and I told the Village Attorney, "I am putting the tenant in." And I did. But I'm losing $2,000 a month since then. Now, I don't think, I don't think that the game has been played fairly, okay? And I know some of you guys weren't on the Board, but I have a good memory.
No, I feel for you, and I understand, I understand your plight, okay? And from what I remember, in other words, how should I say, your tenants were denied, okay, because of the rule of 200 feet at that time?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I'm just going back, it's a while.
I don't recall, but I think one of them was to sell.
But there was nothing underhanded or anything else like that thereby. That was the reason that was stated at the time that they couldn't do it.
The last tenant, it's occupied now. I believe a tenant did come here, and he now has.
Occupied, occupied at a lot less, a lot less money, 17 months after it been vacant.
But I think the tenant you have in there now was approved by, I think, the planning board. I don't think it was a board, I don't think.
It's not an auto body shop, correct?
Not an auto body shop. It's a, it's a storage place.
All right.
So, a couple of points of clarification. Number one, special permits follow the business owners, right? So, with Broken Bow Brewery that we just approved, we gave it to the business. If the business is ever sold, they got to come back and ask for it again. So, it doesn't go with the actual building, it goes with the actual business. So, that's what special use permits do. It's different than a zoning variance or an area variance which follows the building, of course. So, that's the first thing.
So, if I come back tomorrow for an auto body shop, I can get a special use permit?
Well, so, I won't say no, but I would say it might be unlikely, given the zoning code changes that the Village Board of Trustees put forward, where they don't want a density of auto body shops on Marbledale Road. So, they made a specific.
I understand your point.
Change, yes.
I understand your point. But I was there long before this other auto body shop was there, and I was there before the code was changed, and the property was vacant before the code was changed, when they went from three stories or from two stories to six stories. And by the way, I was never even notified. So, I think I have a good lawsuit for the city, for the Village.
I hear you, I feel your pain, but I don't understand how that is going to affect our decision to approve or deny the special use permit. I mean, the money matter, as was stated by our Attorney, is a civil matter for you to address, and if these codes were changed, then they were changed.
Yeah. Bottom line was, they didn't want another auto body shop there.
Okay.
Because there were, if the hotel, whatever the hotel wanted, they got. The hotel got in there, and I have no, I have no problem with the hotel. I have lost a tenant that's paid me $4,300 a month, he hasn't paid me in 17 months. I'm not a bank. These guys here across the street think that I am. I'm not, I'm not the Red Cross. But they, they came in there, the bank did, and the Village bent over backwards for them. They were supposed to park on the property. If I go down there now, I have 180 feet of road frontage. I cannot park my car. And by the way, they got an okay for the special use permit on the condition that they'd park their cars in the lot. And that was their thing, that they wanted, they wanted more space and they wanted to park the car. I can tell you, five, six cars belong to them is parked on the street every morning.
Mr. Denning, is this the hotel we're talking about?
I'm sorry?
The hotel you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the hotel, and I'm talking about the special use permit that they're looking for, and they're parking cars on the street every morning. But the hotel is not parking on the property.
The hotel, yeah, the hotel was, they don't have a special permit, the hotel.
No, they're not special, they're not special permit.
But the resolution does require them to have all the parking on site.
Yeah.
So, if you do see people parking on there and walking onto the hotel site to work, you need to call that in, because that's an enforcement issue.
Okay. Well, this is happening every day.
Yeah, they need to know about that.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Denning?
No, not at this time.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak regarding 100 Marbledale Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 100 Marbledale, thank you. As we discussed, we need to, we need to think through these, work through these issues and have you back next month. All right? Thank you very much.
Can we have 198 in? Get them out here.
Yeah. Next item will be 198 Midland Avenue. Is the applicant here? State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, John Scavelli.
Hello, Fusho.
Thank you. Do you have any additional questions or concerns regarding your area variance for the FAR in the basement?
Has the public seen the new drawings?
No. Okay, thank you. I need to make a motion to open the public hearing. Do we have a second on opening the public hearing for this?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak regarding 198 Midland Avenue? Please step forward. Seeing none, and I just need to point out that since this has been on our agenda for several months, we are going to proceed, and I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I would like to clarify, the applicant has made changes to their initial application based on feedback from the Board and concerns that the Board had regarding the zoning within the area for a two-family home. They were more than, they were very good at helping us come to a solution that works for them. They have a lovely family home now, and we're looking forward to them being in town. So, welcome.
Should we put the prints on the screen?
Yeah, we probably.
They haven't even showed, since they haven't had their formal.
They haven't presented here.
Yeah, we should talk to them about.
Good point. So, probably just going to have you run through the plans as they are currently versus going through, you know, each iteration. Let's just go with the, as you're building it.
Hey, Donnie?
As background, the applicant has a two-family home. They are looking to use the basement as part of their first-floor family space, and will be connecting the two spaces with a shared staircase. And this is the, this is what it is now, correct, with this? I can't, I can't see this.
Yeah, no, you can grab, grab the mic if you would, please, and then just walk us through what your proposals are.
Sure. So, the first plan, the existing basement plan, was the original approved finished basement plan from 2002. So, the proposal was to renovate the existing basement, given the FAR was actually exceeding the approved FAR for the, so, so, the application is to renovate the basement, but there is an additional FAR of 0.63, which is .13 over the approved FAR for the zoning. And in terms of the layout, this, the proposed basement use is for a recreation room with two bedrooms and a bathroom with an interconnection by means of a spiral staircase directly to the first apartment at the first level. There is a second staircase that also accesses, but this one would be formally closed off as there is the apartment at the second level of the home as well.
And the room in the front there with the, is that French doors?
So, yep. So, one is basement utility room, the other is a bedroom with a French door egress to the outside.
So, those are both emergency, well, not emergency, but exits?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And the spiral staircase is enclosed at either end, it's open to both floors, creating kind of a shared space, you know? We're not having two separate units within the same building.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. I think it looks fantastic.
Any other questions from board members? It does, it looks very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, as I stated, we made a motion, and it was seconded and approved to close the public hearing on this.
So I would just comment, Chairman.
Sure.
Whenever applicants are renovating basements, we're always concerned that they can be turned into additional apartments. So because this applicant put in the spiral staircase and connected the basement in the first-floor apartment, it becomes very apparent that it's just one unit. And therefore, therefore, exceedingly FAR, F-A-R, I think we view as reasonable in this instance.
In the manner of a single family, of a family home between, split between two floors.
Exactly right.
Good point. Well done. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys so much.
Does any member have a motion for 198 Midland that they would like to present?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion in form of a resolution. Excuse me. This application for area variance is requested by Leonard Fuchsia, whose address, address is 198 Midland Avenue, Toccoho, New York, for release from the following section of the zoning code, 4-3 dot 6, floor area ratio, 4-3 dot 4 dot 2, side yard, and 5-1 dot 6 dot 3, expanding a non-conformity. Secret resolution. Based on this application as submitted, this zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action, subject to the requirements of SECA and its implementing regulations. Two, this zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make this determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. Three, that the application, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Thank you, Member Palladino. Do I have a second to this motion?
Second.
Thank you. Nancy, please poll the board.
Member May.
Approved.
Member Skelton.
Approve.
Member Palladino.
Approved.
Member Jackson.
Approved.
Chairman Rehm.
Approved. Please proceed with the area variance.
And welcome to Toccoho.
Congratulations.
We've got to finish.
We have to finish.
Applicant Leonard Fuchsia is seeking to finish the basement at the premises 198 Midland Avenue. The work to be performed will make the basement livable space. Since the basement is livable space, counts toward the FAR, floor area ratio, the property will exceed the allowable FAR, hence this application seeking a variance to exceed the FAR. Since this property is an existing non-conforming property, the applicant is seeking a side yard variance, as the side yard is already non-conforming, and the applicant is expanding the non-conformity even though no work is going to be performed, and on the exterior of the building. Lastly, the applicant is seeking a variance to expand the non-conformity. Recommendation for the area variances to be granted as the benefit of, excuse me, to the applicant of the area variances outweighs the detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. In this application and applying to the balancing test, this zoning board finds that benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. One, there will not be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and there will not be a detriment to nearby properties. By granting this application, detriments to the surrounding properties will not be produced. This application concerns interior renovations that will not have any impact on the visual character of the neighborhood or to be a detriment to the nearby properties. Two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. Based on the lot size and zoning classification, the applicant cannot achieve its renovation absent the granting of the sought area variances. Three, the requested variances are not substantial. Although on its face it appears that the variances are substantial, the existing building is already non-conforming, and the improvements are solely to be made on the interior of the building. Four, the proposed variance will not have any adverse impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood, in that environmental conditions such as noise, parking, and traffic, and negative aesthetics will not be increased as a result of this application. Five, the alleged difficulty was self-created, although the alleged difficulty was self-created, it is not fatal to this application.
Thank you, Member Palladino. Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Nancy, please poll the board.
Member May.
Approved.
Member Skelton.
Approve.
Member Palladino.
Approved.
Member Jackson.
Approved.
Approved. Congratulations. Looks good.
Welcome to Toccoho.
Thank you. Okay. You two, happy holidays to you, thank you. The next item on the agenda is 20 Underhill. Is the applicant present? If so, please step forward. Kindly state your name and address for the record.
Peter Bergen. I'm an architect working with the phones.
Okay, thank you. And you are here for?
Variants for a deck.
Very good. Do you have any questions or anything of the board?
I think you should put it up on it.
Yeah, I think he has drawings.
Yeah, I have some drawings and, I brought copies for everybody, or?
Good. We have the copies that you disseminated.
It's just for the folks at home.
Yeah, explain the project, what you're trying to accomplish, and what you're doing. If you could maybe put it on the board, and then what will happen is they'll zoom in on it, and you can kind of point to some of the features. That'd be great. You know, explain potentially where the property. Explain where the property is, what's around it, and...
20 Underhill Street, right next door.
Right.
It, but it's actually on a driveway or parking lot over here with Town Hall, Town Hall. There's an existing porch, deck, stairs coming down from the main living level. And what I've done is, in the pink area, is I've tried to indicate the proposed new deck, and then there'll be a spiral staircase here, which is indicated. So basically, it's in the, it's in pretty much the same footprint. The issue is the side yard setback here. So we're not, we're not moving it any closer. We're going to build it basically on the same footing, piers and everything, and we're just going to be expanding it a little bit in this direction. So as you see right now, the stairs come down, everything will be at this elevation, which is like a step down from the main living area.
So you're asking?
You're asking for a side yard variance. So what is actually next to this property? What is it abut against?
It abuts against the... Photos as well. It's right next door here. There's 20 Underhill, it's right here.
Would you just clip it up to the... No rush.
So we are probably in here somewhere, and there's the site, and the deck is right, well, you can't see it because of the tree. Here's a picture of the existing, existing stoop. Here's basically what's underneath. Again, probably be using the same, more or less the same piers. There's the view coming out of the door. Again, the new deck will be at this elevation.
Can you step to the side? He's trying to zoom in.
I'm sorry.
But you can see, if you look up at the TV.
If you look up at the TV, you can see it.
The camera is right there.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And the issue, as you guys know, is this. The side yard, this is the existing side yard. As you can see, the stairs are coming down, right? And we're going to be basically at that same plane.
It's essentially an existing property that's been there forever. It's already in violation of the side yard provision. Just to clarify, you're not going any further into that little side yard area?
No, no, we're coming right off, same, same.
So we're not encroaching any further into the side yard, we're just...
That's correct. If you look at the drawings, I think, I've tried to indicate that.
And if, in fact, yeah, in fact, if you want to put that one in front, so we can let the people at home see that.
So, yeah, I mean, we're basically at the same plane, and we are, we are, in fact, kicking this side out a little bit further than the existing, but that's, we're proposing to kick this side out about a foot.
On the, on the other side of the house, then?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah.
And it's basically just running across with a diagonal, and then putting in a circular or spiral staircase there.
But that side is compliant. It's not close enough to the side. It's only the existing condition that you're not expanding any further than has already stated, so.
And so you are expanding the deck quite a bit, though, and making it prettier?
Right, it's basically just this area would be expansion. If you take into account that this is the existing stair and landing down to the grade.
Right.
There's no rear, there's no rear, excuse me, rear yard non-conformity, so that's no problem. The only non-conformity is the side yard, and you're still building within that there non-conformity and not increasing it.
That's correct.
Right.
And, I mean, you know, we probably shouldn't have just, like, just the last person, right? We should just, like, for the, you know, variant, the existing non-conformity or whatever, and we wouldn't have a problem in the future should they want to do something, but it's a little deck and...
No, it looks very nice.
Looks very nice.
Yeah, I like the spiral staircase, it's really nice.
The only thing I was wondering is your east elevation, those stairs aren't right, right? On the east elevation, it looks like the stairs are going back under the deck. That's not correct, correct? That one. See, it looks like it's going back under the structure.
Right, no, it's not. It's, 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 you enter it here, you're kind of underneath it a little bit, and then you're working your way up.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thank you.
It's a, is a way to make the stair work, it's, because it's a...
No, it looks great. The spiral staircase is beautiful.
It's been, I just don't, it's June, and anyway, I feel bad for the owners because they're, you know, it's, right for a little deck to... But that's, it's not your fault.
Yeah, the public.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much. We need to make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So as we discussed in the work session, we'll leave this open until the following meeting, at which time we'll close it and proceed, provided there are no complaints or anything from the public that we need to address. But it looks pretty straightforward to us.
So we should come back then for the next?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions of us before you go?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. Don't forget your drawings.
Pictures.
Thanks again.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Any other business that needs to be discussed? Oh, there's nobody.
Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year.
Mr. Denning, thank you.
You and your family.
Mr. Chair, I think you could let the record reflect that there was no one in the public in the audience.
Let that record reflect that there is no one in the audience to comment on this particular variance. Thank you. Seeing no other business, I'm going to make a motion to close the meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, Toccoho. Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.